All of our planning board members here with the one vacancy. With Tom Andres, having been elevated to the Board of Trustees in the March election. But we have Lindsey Krakauer, Kirsten Harry, Ed McCarthy, Matthew Brennan, Erin Carney. Let me just. Review the agenda. We actually have a new agenda, which is the. Writer's Center, which will be a quick item. And then the rest of the agenda is GTY New York Leasing amended site plan at 215 North Broadway. 650 Riverside Drive where they're looking for a site plan approval for Postpool has requested an adjournment. Then Taffsey Realty at 47 Clinton Street. It's a proposed change of use. Perhaps the applicant will come and provide an update. Of what transpired at the zoning board meeting last night. Then we have 135 Beekman Avenue, which is a site plan approval. And that's a presentation by the applicant, not yet a public hearing. So there will be no. Comments from the public for that discussion at this time. Next on the agenda is 14 Clinton Street, a proposed two-family residence, just also a presentation. And then last on the agenda is Lighthouse Landings. An architectural review of their Phase Three block OP townhouses, the ones that were being expedited. And I will read. The statement once again. That tonight's meeting and work session is being convened in accordance with the Governor's Executive Order number 202.1 issued March 13th, 2020, which suspends certain provisions of the New York State Open Meetings Law to allow a municipal board to convene a meeting via video conferencing in accordance with the executive order. The public has been provided with the ability to view tonight's meeting and a transcript will be provided at a later date. We've also confirmed with our village clerk that this meeting has been duly noticed by posting notices on the village's bulletin boards and sending copies to the Warner Library, the local Journal News and Hudson Independent, as well as information on our village website and village Facebook page. So with that, our first agenda item. Is a. Re-execution of a resolution for 300 Riverside Drive, the Hudson Valley Writer's Center. Clinton, do you want to describe what we need to do here?
Yes, ma'am. I do not have the resolution, however, so David or James or someone else will have to read it, read the. But in brief, the, we got an email from the attorney for GTNY. And the nutshell was.
No, for the Hudson Valley Writer's Center.
Writer's Center, yes, I'm sorry. And in the nutshell, that the. Department of Health had dilly-dallyed and had not signed the plan in time for them to get it to the. County for filing within the 62 days that the law allows. And she asked that. This board waive the whatever requirements that would apply. And further that this board re-adopt their prior resolution in the same form with the same conditions, et cetera. And then she'll take that and have that filed.
Okay, any questions? If not, I move to re-adopt the resolution that had been. Approved. On. January 21st, 2021. Can I get a second?
Second.
And with that, you're waiving the requirements that would otherwise apply and also finding it a type two action.
Okay, thank you, Quentin. So Lindsey was the second?
Yes.
And all in favor, Ed?
Hi.
Kirsten?
Hi.
Erin?
Hi.
Matt? Matt, you're muted.
Hi, thanks.
Okay, thanks, everyone. So resolution has passed. Thank you, Clinton, for drafting that.
Yes, ma'am.
All right. And the next agenda item is GTY New York. And Ms. Forrest, are you here to speak to that? You're also muted. There we go, the sorry. Well, it happens to the best of us.
Um, yes, we met with the zoning board last month and discussed the designs that we had proposed. And we had a great discussion and we took everything into consideration and we offered to make some changes and do a compromise, go more with what they were looking for. And we went back to them last night with new design, smaller signs and halo lettering as opposed to frontlit lettering. And they were all very happy with it.
All right. Is there anything you need to share with us that you want to screen share?
I don't have that ability to screen share. I don't know, Sean, do they have the drawings?
Yeah, they all have the revised drawings.
Okay.
If you'd like, I can put them up if you want to see them. But it's just basically the same design, it's just smaller version.
Just smaller.
It's the same design, smaller version, but also different lighting and there was a night.
Yes.
If you could share that, that would be great.
The board was concerned about, you know, the, the amount of lighting that goes on at the gas stations in general, between the canopy lighting, the pedestal lighting. And so the revised lighting, they were very happy with. And it also will have the condition that the lighting will be turned off by 2:00 AM. On a regular basis.
Well, that's great. I'm sure the neighbors will appreciate that.
I agree.
Okay. So. Given this is a amended site plan, any other comments from the planning board members? Um. I guess we draft a resolution or?
Yes.
We don't have anything drafted thus far, so. Can I ask David Smith?
Yes, we'll have it ready for next month.
All right.
Does that mean we must wait for you to draft that next month or? Sean?
Well, the board could actually take a vote now based upon the application. It's up to you guys, if you're comfortable with what's been proposed already.
Is everyone comfortable? Should we move to approve the site plan?
I move to accept it.
Okay, so.
Prepare a confirmatory resolution for next month, if you want to move with the site plan tonight.
Okay, so we'll take Ed's as the, the first motion.
Madam Chairman?
A second, yes?
Before you vote, you need to open and close a public hearing.
Oh, you're right. Yep, this has been going on for a while. All right, so I moved to open the public hearing for GTY New York Leasing. Can I get a second?
Second.
Kirsten seconds, Ed?
Hi.
Matt?
Hi.
Erin?
Hi.
Lindsey?
Hi.
And Marjorie, I. So the public hearing is open. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak to this application? Okay. I've moved to close the public hearing. Can I get a second?
Second.
Ed seconds, Lindsey?
Hi.
Erin?
Hi.
Matt?
Hi.
Kirsten?
Hi.
The public hearing is closed. And now we'll remove to approve the site plan. Ed, you want to move again?
Okay, yes, I moved to approve the site plan.
I'll second it. Kirsten?
Hi.
Lindsey?
Hi.
Erin?
Hi.
Matt?
Hi.
All right, site plan has been approved. Ms. Forrest, it's been a long process. When do you anticipate the sign being installed?
Well, I don't believe it'll be installed before your resolution is complete, but we just need to go ahead to get it into production and manufacture. So that's why I asked to call for that vote.
Right, right, I'm assuming it'll take some time to manufacture, but. Within the next month or so with the.
Within the next month to month and a half.
All right.
Thinking it'll be toward the end of May, possibly beginning of June. We have a lot of them in fabrication as we speak, so it's kind of hard to give an exact time, but I can write it up for them and get it into the production line. And then when they get started, they get started.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, have good evening.
You also.
650 Riverside Drive Site Plan Approval. I motion to open the public hearing. Can I get a second?
Second.
Matt seconds, Erin?
Hi.
Lindsey?
Hi.
Kirsten?
Hi.
Ed?
Hi.
Okay. The public hearing is open. Is there anyone present to speak to it? Either the applicant or the public? If not, I move to adjourn this public hearing until. What's the date in May? Is it May 20th?
That's correct, 20th.
Okay, so we adjourn this public hearing until May 20th, 2021. Can I get a second?
Second.
Kirsten seconds, Ed?
Hi.
Matt?
Hi.
Erin?
Hi.
Lindsey?
Hi.
Okay, we'll see. The Moskowitz. In May. The next is a presentation of 47 Clinton Street Taffsey Realty. And we have Mr. Vasalati. You're muted, sir.
I'm muted, hi.
Hi.
On 47 Clinton, we had the zoning board meeting last night.
Okay.
So that's under, we're going to be coming back to that zoning board meetings to make some changes. But I have nothing to say tonight about it. We did a little last night.
Okay, yeah, we thought that maybe you would have wanted to give a little update to the planning board. That's fine, that's totally acceptable.
For sure.
Okay, terrific. We will then. Move to the next agenda item, 135 Beekman Avenue, the proposed multifamily building.
Yes. Okay. Well, we resubmit to. And sent to you. Based on the comments that you had brought up at the last meeting, one was to provide a streetscape, which we did. One, we moved the portco share to front to eliminate any, any obstructions for a tall vehicle getting into the property. And we didn't size up all the parking spots. And that was submitted with the revised rendering. Christopher? Why Chris is open is Christopher's works is my son here.
Yeah.
So Chris, in addition to the revised parking, the elevations, the focal share and the. Streetscape, is any? Yeah, that's what you have up there, I see. Is it, can people hear me, I guess?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, thank, so this is what we resubmitted. So if you want to first look at the site plan, this is under a new review by us. We are going to look to. The client is considering eliminating the indoor pool and which would allow us to get some more parking spots under the building, as many as I believe five. And with that, we could eliminate five parking spots outside to try and accommodate the outdoor recreational space. Currently, we have the outdoor recreational space on the roof. But I'm reading through some of the memorandum and everything. I see that some other individual had proposed that. My question was, was that rejected? Is there reference to another property, these correspondents? Hold on. Parking spots.
I think it was Andrew's, Jim.
It was Andrew's Avenue, Chris.
I thought that's what I remember reading.
Andrew's Avenue, was that something that was resolved? I'm just curious whether or not that was allowed to have rooftop recreational space.
We had suggested rooftop, making better use of the rooftop, but they don't have any rooftop recreational space.
Okay. Rooftop recreation. And. With the change in the parking, we might, which one of the comments, your engineers were to put a more or less circular driving, come in one way, come around the building, go out the other way to eliminate the possible congestion with the two cars coming out from at the same time. Somebody coming in, somebody coming out. I had put a little driveway pull-off area in the event of a conflict. But I can't anticipate that there's going to be that many conflicts in a building of this size with 30 parking spots. But if we could go around the building, it's something we're considering. What I'm going to be doing is working with the traffic consultant who we had at the zoning hearing last night and he. I want him to work with me because I know we didn't provide attorney radiuses, et cetera, that you requested. So I want to get him on board, see how we could perhaps come up with a different, a more acceptable layout to you. As I say, if we could eliminate the pool, put some additional parking spots under the building, we could free up outside for a better layout.
Are you considering two curb cuts onto Beekman Avenue?
I don't know, it's, it's, it wasn't my suggestion. It is the suggestion of one of these reviewers.
Yeah, I don't think that's, I don't think that's what the board wants to see.
Okay, well, I'm just reacting to what somebody put in writing that they thought that that.
Two curb cuts within 80 feet, frontage is probably not going to be a successful solution on Beekman Avenue in that location.
Okay, so then. Perhaps we'll eliminate that consideration. The only thing we could do is, you know, we've been unsuccessful in trying to get an appointment with the fire department. We've requested through the building department, which I understand has had the protocol of going to the zoning point. The fire department. So far, we haven't been able to reach them. So I wanted to sit down with the fire department.
I've already talked to them about it.
Oh, Sean?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, and what did they say?
It's too premature. There's too many questions that are outstanding with the planning board.
Okay, so then we won't talk to them.
No, just, we're looking to refine the site plan a little bit better and then we'll bring it before them. But their initial impressions were that they could not access the, you know, the back parking area with their apparatus.
Well, the question I have is, what is the need for them to go on site with a fire truck? If the building is burning, who's going to come down that alleyway with the fire going? Doesn't make sense to me, but I'm not a fireman, so I wouldn't know.
Right, so they don't always approach buildings just to put fires out.
Well, whatever they do, obviously, I can't provide a turning radius on this site for a fire truck. You know, you could eliminate that whole parking in the back if you have to turn a fire truck around. If they can't back up down the driveway, they could pull in the driveway, come all the way to the back of the building and they could back out of the driveway. So anyhow, that's that. You want to put the streetscape up, Chris?
Is there any opportunity to pull through all the way through the end of the property? Like, is there any opportunity to have a egress on the rear of the?
Building, I don't know, Christopher, but no, I don't think so. I mean, there's, there's buildings back there. Not sure what that is.
Yeah, but there is a major proposal that's going to be built on that property that abuts your property on Andrew's Lane. You may want to overlay their site plan with yours to see how things match up.
Okay, how would I have access to their site plan?
You just asked.
Dirty Andrews.
Yep, we can provide that information.
Okay, that'd be great, great, like to see what's going on.
Yeah, they went through many modifications to accommodate emergency vehicle access. So it would be good if you could confer with them and somehow take advantage of their.
They've come up with, sure, would I be able to come to the building department and take a look?
I can email to you.
Or it could be emailed to me?
I'll email to you.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, Chris, you have the streetscape? Okay, here we go. Just so I. That, okay, that's good. Right now, the tallest building on the block is the house that exists on the site in question. I think that's about 42 feet to the top. Ours is 44. And my understanding for the zoning is it's 45 that I can go to. And I have to read your definitions because in New York City, they consider the roof, not the parapet, the height of the building. I'm not sure if that's the same in your town or not, but we can look through that. So there's the streetscape, there's the houses that are there. From what I understand, there's a tall building right across the street. Few other nondescript four-story brick buildings nearby. And this is what ours would look like. If we accomplish this.
It sounds like you haven't been to Beekman Avenue, have you?
No, I've been there.
Okay.
I've Googled it and everything, my son's been there. Christopher Badley is my son and he is there many times, he's an architect as well. We have, we know about the taller buildings, et cetera.
Okay.
Look at the rendering, Christopher. We've eliminated the portco share. And all of these balconies right now are beyond the curb line. So if somebody comes in, they're not going to obviously take the balcony out. Vehicle. Whatever. We took that away. Just to decide, we haven't finalized finishes or anything like that. But we have opted for hardy board siding, six inches to the weather, you know, and an asphalt shingle roof. That's our initial proposal. I mean, obviously, we're not finalized anything because we have to get through all these boards and everything first.
Can you go to the previous view, Christopher? So if you look at the streetscape. All of the other buildings have porches and doors.
I see that.
On the front. And, and so this building that you're proposing is, you know, it, it's the side and it's not consistent.
Some ideas to alter it somewhat, that's this particular side, the front, that would bring it more into conformity with the, all the other houses on the block that have an initial gable of some support on the front of the building. So I will be modifying that.
Okay.
And what else did Christopher give me today? So like I said, we did receive the comments on Monday and Tuesday this week from your two consultants. And we will be planning to address all of those prior to the next meeting. There's a bunch, a number of things that the Hudson engineering has to do regarding to septic, et cetera, et cetera. And then again, there's things that I have to do based upon some comments, et cetera.
Okay, are all comments clear? Do you have any questions for our consultants or engineers? I guess you can address those offline.
There's nothing else to show, right, Christopher?
No, not really at this point.
Okay, thank you. So we want to continue with the. I guess you're saying, Sean, that we have to move this a little bit further along before the fire department will comment on it?
Yeah, I just think that you need to have our planners and engineers be a little bit more satisfied with the access. And then once that's defined, by all means, we'll bring it to the fire department for review.
Okay. Very good, thank you. Uh. I'm sure Pamela will send to me when the due date is for the next board meeting to much more back to you by that next meeting.
May 6.
May 6 is the, when things have to be sent in?
Yeah, so we would like it by May 6, but by all means, you know, if you're, if you're a day or so behind, just let us know and
Okay.
we'll try to coordinate that with the board.
Okay, let's see what we could do to get it done on the 6th.
Yeah, we don't want to delay it because you're off a day or two.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that.
You just have to realize that it's less time that, you know, our consultants have to.
Have to look at it, sure, makes sense. Uh. So we'll reach out to Hudson tomorrow, make sure they start taking care of their end. And Christopher and I will work on trying to comply with agreements, terms with the engineers' reports that were architectural and site related. are more architectural and site-related.
I would focus less on the engineering, with all due respect, James, but um I think we should get um into James Natarelli. Um, I think you need to get the building bulk and design and the site circulation and the parking and things of that nature in order, because obviously that will affect your engineering issues. So I think you need to get a comfort level with the board on that first, and then obviously the engineering can run right behind that.
No offense, Dave and Sean, I agree. Thank you.
So, uh Marjorie, would it be okay if I made a comment?
Of course.
Sure, um I'd just like to go on record to say that this particular um portion of Beekman is a quite an important um corridor to link the new development of Eden Hudson to the existing commercial district. And so a building of this size is significant and the um pedestrian experience is very critical. So I, I, I do really ask that you um not only look at the immediate, you know, few houses, but really think about the massing and portion of um this building in context of the area and its, and, and it's, and its significance in bridging um new development on Beekman between the new portion of Sleepy Hollow and the commercial area. So that, that's my sincere request.
Okay. My, my goal here is to put, establish a code compliant building with all respect to the zoning, bulk, use, parking, et cetera.
Yeah, and we would like the aesthetics to be, you know, in character with that section.
We'll give that a shot, yes.
It better be better than a shot.
It better go for a COVID shot.
It better be better than a shot because this board approves the architectural design as well.
Yeah, okay, so there's no architectural review board?
You're talking to them.
You're looking at them.
The architectural review board?
Right.
Yep.
That's perfect.
Okay.
That's what we want to satisfy you and make you happy too.
Okay.
That's all.
I appreciate the elevations you provided that show the context on Beekman, and I think it illustrates, well, maybe how much room there is for improvement in your current design. And so we look forward to um what you come back with us next. Hopefully, we'll fit in uh better with the existing context.
Thank you. Will do.
Okay, well, uh hopefully we'll see you on May twentieth.
Five twenty, okay. All right, we're going to work and get this in as soon as possible. And like you said, I, you know, the, I, besides engineering, which is obviously the initial part of this whole thing, is to take care of these uh your, your plan is comments. What we could do to, you know, make everybody happy.
All right, sounds like a plan. Thank you.
Okay, thank you all for having us again tonight.
Hey, good night.
Take care. Bye.
Okay, next on the agenda is fourteen Clinton Street. Ms. Alto, are you speaking?
Yes, hold on one minute. Okay, hi, everyone. How are you?
Good, thanks. How are you?
Good, thank you. Um, I was listening earlier, and there were a couple of things I did want to um point out. We didn't move the house back fifteen feet. Like I had the old plans in front of me. I was waiting for the architect to join us, but I wish you had an emergency. But the house has moved back fifteen feet. Um, and then you had brought up the fact of where the decks are. If you look on page, look, on the actual plans, to the rear of the apartment, to the rear of the apartment, there are sliding west doors from the apartment onto the patios. See, the apartment in the rear that is there, um we didn't move the parking. And where the parking was, it is a two-bedroom apartment on the ground level. And then you have on second and third, a three-bedroom duplex. So the world of changes made. Um also
Uh, Ms. Alto, um if you could relate to your architect, the, the drawings that we received really aren't sufficiently clear for us to see you know, the, where it's sitting on the street. Last meeting, we also asked for um additional drawings of the street view, and if you were listening to the previous applicant uh showing this uh structure relative to the others on the street, uh we do want some um uniformity in terms of the character of the building relative to uh the neighboring homes. And right now, the, the front of your um proposal looks like it's entirely just flat with
Fine, right.
doors and windows. There's no porches or gable roofs.
More uniform, okay.
So um we want to respect the character and aesthetic of, of Clinton Street and
I mean, you know, on one side, we have the mechanic shop. Um, we were actually hoping um Ted West's modular command. And unfortunately, no matter how hard we tried with them, Joe had said to us there was no way possible, which would have been a very easy solution. So again, we go back to the drawing board. Um, what I'm going to do is I'm going to go up there. I'm actually going to go up tomorrow, and I'm going to take some pictures and see if um Yair can go with me, the architect, so that I can say, okay, this is what we need to do to the front. Yes, we've moved it back, we've added the decks, we've done this, but we need to add more to it. So this way it will be more uniform. Um, the house sits to the immediate, if you're facing to the left, is an older structure. Um, so again, if we're going to add a porch, now we're bringing the house further forward again. You know, it's not a big piece of land, so we're trying to utilize, but also have it set back a little, which is, see, being you have on the right side, you have the mechanic shop, which gives off like the fumes and everything else. So if you set it back where we figure we're going to have it now, you wouldn't be getting as much from the cars. But again, if you're bringing porch forward, now we have a problem because now that porch sits in line with it.
Dana, you're frozen. We can't uh
Better now?
Yeah, it's better now. The last word is that it sits in line.
Right, so what happens is where we would put a porch, because we went back as far as we really can right now, but you have the mechanic shop to the right of us.
You was right.
So where they had their cars would be in line where you have a front porch, so whoever's sitting there are, is going to get the fumes from cars. What I'm going to do is I'm going to actually take some pictures and videos, and I'm going to upload them so you can see what it's like there during the day and toward the evening. Because usually you open up to like six or seven P M. So that's like a really big issue as well. You know, when the other houses don't have that, we have that problem right now.
So are you still proposing to park in the front yard?
No, no, you took out the parking totally. No more parking, no parking whatsoever. So
I'm, I'm sorry, this is Dejaira Volka. So I am the architect of record. Sorry for the delay. I had some some stuff to take care of, some family matters. Um, but
Yeah, I did build in briefly about the situation with the front porch and that the house has been back and, you know, pretty much all of that. So go ahead. We were in the middle, so go ahead.
Yes, we um, we took some of the recommendations that were given uh and, and the before meeting. We're removing all the parking uh that we had on the basement, and what we're proposing is a, a single apartment or dwelling on the basement level and then a duplex on the, on the first and second floor. We have pushed back the building about fifteen feet to comply with the requirement of the um front setback, which is improving from what was there before, and uh basically having a two-bedroom or um on a, on the, on the basement level with a three-bedroom duplex above.
Yeah, I want to interrupt you for one second. The lesson that we were all discussing, that what they're saying is we have the porches in the back. I explained the situation. They want the, everything uniformed. The house is around to a front porch, but we don't have that option because if we put the porch in the front of the house, that now becomes in line with the mechanic shop and their cars, which are giving off fumes. So you're going to be right there where they're going to be working on cars, and I could be able to use that front porch. So I'm going to take some pictures of that tomorrow. And we can upload that.
Okay, if, if it's an option, we could have some sort of a balcony, which is, you know, narrower, and maybe have some, you know, four or five feet balconies and, and push the building back a little bit. We have some depth to play with, but we don't have this width. So whichever way we can balance what we have with what we're lacking, you know, we're, we're more than happy to work with that. The one in the back is more for like privacy and uh, you know, um to enjoy the backyard, but at the front would be mostly to then to balance with the rest of the structures. We can, we can try to do an option, and we can do some mass study, prepare some um three Ds, so you can see both options.
We'd also like to see your proposal relative to the other um uh structures on the street in a drawing. Um, I don't know that we need to see a photos or, or video per se, um but some architectural renderings of your proposal um in comparison to the, the, the streetscape would be helpful.
Okay.
Um, David Smith, David Smith had made a, a good suggestion. Uh, we had a prior applicant a few years ago who had, you know, the sufficient level of detail and the types of drawings that we would like to see. So we'll, um, the building department will forward those to you.
That, that would be, that would be great. That would be great.
Yes, I greatly appreciate it.
Okay.
I just want to comment on um the discussion that we were having about the front facade and that I, my understanding is you've actually set the building back from the other um, probably complying with our code. So I think we prefer to see actually something more similar to your neighbors that is existing non-conforming and support you in a variance for that. And um I see the front porch as something, and I understand all of what you just described, but not only architecturally and formally will it improve the aesthetic of the building, but on a practical and functional level, as people come home, they have a roof over their heads when they're standing at the door opening, it's going to improve their um you know, experience of coming and going from their home and give them a little added space on that front. So feel free to come for the front porch. One thing I noticed and I had a question about was why you have the ground floor below grade. If you notice, the other houses that do have these porches that we're talking about, they sit up a, a few steps from grade, and so that might um aid in the, the discussion you were just having about car fumes. But anyway, just also aesthetically, that, that level, they're starting up their first, you know, how to say, if you had that first apartment starting above grade and not below grade um is one suggestion. And then also, that facade that you have, looking kind of at the window treatment sizing and proportion compared to other houses, and also right now, your second and third floors, you have different programming happening behind them, but I, I I think that third floor that has bedrooms, you could think about having different windows. You could even think about a different roof line. Um, that would be more in keeping with what's happening on the street, or maybe, you know, if you switch the roof orientation, had a dormer, there's a lot of opportunity there to enrich your, your front facade.
Okay, so uh Kristen, um the reason we have it a little bit of, um, you know, like um below grade, it was to try to maximize this square footage that we have in play because we have a limit um in terms of height. So as you know, when you play only with dormers, you're killing, you know, you have your knee walls and your very steep roof and all that stuff, so you start taking away um from what we could, uh from what we, what would be, you know, regular square footage. So it was uh trying to maximize um the building footprint in terms of having a habitable basement, first, second, with an attic only for utilities, like, you know, their air handling unit or something like that, instead of having an elevated first, second, and an attic. So it was like you're dealing here with a very tight square footage and with a very narrow um block, so we were just trying to maximize as much as possible. Um, we could also see, um, and I'm going to walk around again and see the videos that I've taken of the neighborhood to see if they have some sort of gable roofs uh and, or shed type roof that would give you maximum uh opportunity to to use this, that attic space square footage, because I understand what you say. Why put it below? The thing is like we're trying to get with this simple with this, well, not simple, uh this really, really small, non-compliant lot, trying to, to achieve as much as we can. It's like I, I, I want to like give you more sirens, but like if we took, if we take even a foot, then, then it's gone. It's like a railroad.
What's the existing height of the building that you're proposing?
Uh thirty-five feet, which is our tops. So it would be, you know, habitable basement, then slightly below grade uh with uh first and second and uh storage attic, you know, versus what, you know, some of the buildings in, 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 in that line are um cellar, non-habitable cellar, first, elevated first, second, and, you know, um storage or maybe a bedroom or two in the attic, but uh for us to try to get as much as we can from here, that's why we, you know, we're setting it back a little bit on grade in order to get this square footage.
Where are you measuring the height from?
From grade to the, to the ridge.
Okay, so if it's a gable roof, you're allowed to take the height from the curb line to the midpoint?
The midpoint. Okay, great, great. You know, each, each, each jurisdiction is different.
So pull it out of the ground.
Okay, so basically, we can like push it those way. If I, if I have a three and twelve and I'm like eight feet, so maybe I can you just elevate it another four feet. That's, that's
Yeah, we're, we're not going to want the front entry to the two-family house below grade.
What was that?
We're not going to want the main entry of the house below.
I know. Okay, so tho- those four feet that I have to play with will, and also maybe I can send you some renderings of um other houses that I've designed with a shed type roof, which, you know, give you the most of the upper floor without, you know, without being the full, you know, the full box, the typical box.
You're, you're allowed to use all the space you can.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Thank you. Definitely. That's good.
I, I'd like to just make one comment, and uh that's it. We certainly appreciate the, the investment in the village and um considering that change of use occurs within, within areas over time, we hope that you'll have, build a, a lovely structure that will be here for a century or more and, and um perhaps the changes to uh vehicles in the near future and the, the move towards electric may resolve some of the um, the fumes and whatnot. And uh and, and so I, I underscore Kirsten's comments about pulling the structure to the front line with the existing homes on the street and um and, you know, we're looking at the character of the block as a whole.
Perfect, perfect. Okay, we're, we're in, we're, we're in the road again, Dana.
We're on the road, there you go.
What we need to do. I'm, I'm sure, I'm sure, I mean, we'll, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna get, you know.
We'll get it next time. Again, everyone, I really look forward to doing work up in Sleepy Hollow. I'm very excited about it. You know, and Yair, we got a work cut out for us.
Yes, yes, and, 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 you know, like Marjorie was saying, if, if you can just send us that information of these other applications well, because that's the thing, it's so hard for, for us to get our hands on anything right now. Like, you know, you would usually go and talk to you know, even some of you in person, do a preliminary presentation and say, hey, what are you looking for? But this is like so hard with, you know, not being able to have that
And what can?
interaction. And I say, oh, here, let me get the folder, go get the folder at this, at this level and call this person, tell him if you can come to Tell him if you can come tomorrow. You know, we're basically trying to make it work.
We have the wonders of technology that will allow the building department to email you the drawings and.
Yes, awesome. Well, we'll let Pamela know. We were trying to get, if 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 you could also give us some permission that we could also see the package that was submitted for the other street. What was the other street? The that that Sean was mentioning that they did modular. We're not gonna do modular.
I explained that we couldn't do it, that it was denied, that there was no way of bringing it in.
Yes, but I know that project was pretty similar to ours in terms, it was a small lot. They didn't have a lot to to, you know, there was not that many options and they make, they made it work. Maybe we can do a special request that this package that, you know, could could serve us right as well.
Yeah, you you might want to talk with that developer and see which company they used because it was a very, very narrow street with power lines, et cetera.
I know that Pamela had said that she did reach out to that developer and she sent him emails and everything else and never got a response from him.
Okay, well, maybe they're busy with their construction. So the next planning meeting is May twentieth and the documents are due into the planning into the building department on May sixth. Will you be ready with your revisions?
I want to give much more than than we have presented. So what I what I think, Marjorie, that we should do is like, I want to sit down with that, you know, sample package that's going to be sent to us and then maybe next week I'll be able to to, you know, because for next presentation, I really want to come out with, you know, renderings and much more prepared now that we're going to have some sort of a sample to serve as a guide. And I don't know if it's Cooper Street, there was a project that was mentioned a lot that narrowed. Yeah, so maybe we can try to get those.
I forgot what it was.
That was Hudson. Yep. All right. Well, no rush, you know. Take your time to be ready and we we're happy to see you in June as well. So just the better prepared you are, the quicker the process will go.
I guess we'll know more by next week, Yehara.
Okay, yes, we'll we'll. Perfect.
Okay, let Sean know.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Also, you may want to stick around and watch the next application to see the level of materials that are presented to the board.
Absolutely.
On a regular basis.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Send you the other stuff.
Okay, thank you so much, Sean.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is Lighthouse Landings.
Hello.
Hello.
My screen. And so this is for the Edgeon Hudson lots one through twenty. As you said earlier, the expedited lots across Palisades Boulevard. I think we've touched on this before and it was a little bit more on the site plan side. So now we just want to dive back into the architecture side of it. So these are the proposed strip elevations in black and white. And you can see it a little bit better in color here. So we wanted, again, to kind of bring in some of the aspects of the Edgeon Hudson Black J Townhomes, while still creating kind of a new feel with different elements such as new trim designs on some of these paneling features. And instead of brick, updating it to a nice stone with a very clean look with the precast caps and precast headers. And we plan to have three elevations block or elevation A, B, and C. And it'll help create a rhythm. We have different bump outs on each of the elevations. Some are two stories, such as this one on the end here. And then you get a little balcony that kind of sets everything back two feet. On this unit, you would actually get a three-story bump out. And on this one again, another three-story bump out. You also have the option on certain lots for front patio doors at the the first floor, depending on the lot. I know we, there was some concern with the connection on the street to these little gardens. So we have taken a look at that. And that also plays into the kit of parts as the customer can purchase this piece, which then begins to create a diverse strip elevation. And in order to make sure that we do maintain this rhythm, we have gone ahead and specified which units you know, are going to go where we want to keep a rhythm such as this. So this would be lot one, you're, this is a high vis end condition. And then you would never have two of these next to each other. So the next lot will always have to be either elevation B or elevation C, all predetermined prior to availability for purchase. And I go here. And here for the kit of parts, again, there's two parts to it, both the builder side and then the customer side. On the elevation, it's more determined by the builder. You know, we use the cultured stone height to vary, to create, again, differences as you're walking by on the street level and the different colors, which, again, we have pre-selected to alternate between scheme A and scheme B to create kind of a vibrant a look on the street. So nothing, you know, it's not too monotone. And then, again, we have the cement panels, the two different styles that help create different looks as you're walking down the street. And then the customer has the chance to, again, buy the patio doors, helping enhance the front elevations. We have in the past also created an option for a little Juliette balcony, which would allow this to start looking more so like this elevation. And we also have multiple fourth floor options, which we've seen great success with in Block J, which has also allowed customers to create kind of customize their own unit, which then in return also customizes the strip as a whole as you're walking by. So let me go. And then on the sides, I know one of the concerns was on this high vis end condition, creating a condition instead of seventy percent of the roof coverage for these loft areas, minimizing it to fifty percent. So what we've done is here, it kind of reads the same. It's still always going to be set back. However, then on the side, as you're walking by, it's more, it's reduced and you have a little bit more open space in the back as compared to the low vis elevation in which is the full. It goes all the way to the back of the unit. I can show you the plan as well for that, so you can see it a little bit better. It still has a nice quality loft in the space. So here would be, here is what we typically use. You either get a loft and a covered outdoor terrace or loft with a bedroom, which leads to, again, that full look on the side elevation with this new fourth floor loft. It's just a smaller loft and then you're able to get a rear terrace as well as a front terrace. And the great thing about this one too is your condensers are able to be on this optional terrace back here, hiding it from the roof, which, again, we, you know, we've been using the HVAC screens, but just as a second option there. And then again, on the sides, the customers have a little bit of, say, in the kit of parts, depending on which floor plan options they get. These are both showing a mid kitchen option. So the windows here will be for the great room. However, we do have a rear kitchen option as well, which would then push these windows towards the center of the house. So that way, again, creating a little bit of variety as you're walking down the street. And then with these high vis bump outs, it creates a whole different look from this side here, where you have paneling up the whole side. And it's just one flat facade versus this one where you have a small bump out and then some windows above. And then on the rears, again, you have a variety of options. We have these nice cantilevered bays on the third floors and the secondary bedrooms. You can also get different options where it'll change your window or door patterns on the second through fourth stories. And then again, this is that high vis, that new option, which helps set back everything and creates a little bit of a different look from what we've seen at Block J. And so here are, again, our basic floor plans. We have just the foyer and a study as standard first floor with the garage in the twenty by forty-sixes, which are all the units except for lot one and lot nine. This is the standard condition with the mid kitchen dining in the front in great room. Then you have your owner's bedroom with two secondaries. The standard is always the stair tower with a terrace. However, again, at Block J, we've seen that customers are really loving those rooftop terraces and kind of customizing those. So we've seen more of the lofts be purchased than just the standard condition. And then again, so this would be for lot one and nine, where you have a twenty-two foot wide unit. Your first floor basically stays the same, just two feet wider. And on those lots, you'll actually have this bump out here for a little bit more space. Then on the second floor, you have your great room in the front, your dining room in the middle, which is where you get those additional windows. We also have an option for another bump out here, which, again, helps kind of elevate those side elevations a little bit more on the high vis side. And then finally, a rear kitchen. The third floor basically stays the same, same with the fourth floor. And then we also have options for a first floor bedroom with a full bath. Nothing really changes on the elevation for this unit besides if you decided to get the patio doors. We also have this new option where we've cut back on the study and created this little outdoor patio space. You know, it would probably bring in that flagstone or whatever paver is used in that front garden area to begin creating a larger usable patio space. A little bit better, so you can see it would look like this with your patio here. So it creates kind of a nice, nice area. You can put a little bistro table in there, have some plants out here. A little bit better of a connection to the street. Then, again, we have our optional rear kitchen. We also have an optional dual owners suite, which then again will adjust your window configuration on the back as well as on the side if it's an end condition. And then at the, again, on the third floor, we have this is that cantilevered bay. And then we have, again, multiple fourth floor loft options, which will change your elevation on every side, really. Depending on the window configuration, obviously, this is open here. The window locations here for this covered terrace versus this loft and then the outdoor terrace. And then finally, again, back to the planted green spaces on the first floor. This shows a couple of different options we have. So you could get the standard condition, which is just a study with a planted green space outside. You could also get the doors with a small patio. It usually only is about four feet deep. Or you could get, again, bedroom with planted green space. Or this study with the recessed entry, which gives you a full six foot of usable patio space. And these would all be buyer driven. So it would kind of depend on how they want to use the space, but the options are there. And these can be used at all, almost all of the locations. For the patios, you can have a patio at lot one through eight and then as well as fifteen through twenty. Unfortunately, these lots are, they're too, too high off the sidewalk. It would require a railing, which we thought that it just wouldn't read as well if you had to have a railing in your small patio space. It kind of loses the connection in our opinion. And then finally, again, these were our color schemes. And we've pre-selected, so it alternates one, two, one, two throughout the whole, the twenty units. And again, we're using some very nice upgraded materials, a very nice cultured stone, the cementitious siding and then nice dark painted trim everywhere. And then we are able to tie in some of the features with Edgeon or the Block J, such as, you know, the garage doors will remain the same, railings, metal awnings and the windows. All of those colors will tie in with that to help connect the two while still maintaining unique appearances. That is my presentation.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Fitzgibbon. I just want to also mention that Peter Chafkin had given, and John Stein had given Ken Ray and myself a tour a few weeks back. And it was very helpful to walk through the model units as well as see the progress on the Riverwalk. So Peter kindly offered, if any other planning board members would like to have a walkthrough, he's he's happy to to schedule that.
And this is Rob with Toll Brothers and we're welcome to have you guys come to the model homes if you wanted to get into any of our buildings as well.
Yep, I had the opportunity to walk through the two award-winning units.
Great.
Thank you. So congratulations on that, by the way.
Thank you.
So it was helpful to hear the comparison in terms of the builder kit of parts versus the buyer kit of parts. So the the buildings are intentionally varied. And then really, it's the fourth floor terrace and various flourishes that the buyer has to, you know, further enhance the differentiation between between the units.
Yes, this is Rob. We we took all the comments that we got on the Block J and really put a lot of effort into these with all the, you know, the first kit of parts thing. So this one was, you know, we really dug in in the patios and rooftops and recessed and not having the same units and different colors and everything that we can do to to really. different colors and e- everything that we can do to to really make these things. So when they're done, that every unit looks different. Um you know, we we got comments from Sean, you know, um from the planning board, the village, and we worked with uh K G G Y to really take time on these uh to listen to all the comments that we got on on the previous buildings. And we're welcome to hear any comments you guys have tonight.
Any uh comments on the architectural details?
Marjorie, I just had a quick question. Can you hear me?
Yep, yep, go ahead.
Okay, sorry. Uh Jennifer, you had uh mentioned that there were uh certain units that had uh the, I'm talking about the patios and the relationship to the uh to the sidewalk. There were certain units that were elevated. Uh and you felt uncomfortable putting a railing in. Was the railing, is the railing a building code requirement or just a a feature that you felt needed to be there because of the uh the design?
No, it it was more so based on um code and getting, based on where the sidewalk elevation was and the uh the first floor level. I think we determined that anything over twenty-four inches um we would want to put a railing on just to be safe, even though by code, I believe it's thirty inches or less. Um so I guess it was a combination of the two. We just thought at a certain point, um you know, just for I additional safety, um you know, twenty-four inches is getting a little high off the ground. And once you put that railing on, it really is going to enclose a four-foot deep uh patio. So we decided that maybe for those units, um we pull back.
So uh would a prospective buyer at some point in time have the ability to modify that if they wanted to put in a patio at their own expense and with a railing, they could do that?
Yes, definitely. Yeah, I mean, I think it would probably have to go through you guys, but um from our opinion, yeah, as long as it meets code, you could definitely do it. And if it's, yeah, if it's a personal preference.
Will there be homeowner restrictions on doing that? Homeowner association restrictions?
This question, uh that's a question for me, Sean. Um never, I mean, I could, we can put that in the docs um that um
I'm just wondering.
Yeah, it's a good question.
Is there, is there any um thought of adjusting the first floor elevations on those units so that, you know, the the whole strip won't be at the same elevation and the tops of the buildings would be modulated?
Greg, is that a question for you?
Yeah.
I'm not sure.
Yeah, I mean, I know you have the required minimum elevation you have to be for the flood requirements, but
Yep.
I know the street dips there. So is that an option or are we going to go same elevation?
So Sean, right now, we we designed the with DTS to keep the uh low garden wall uh consistent height there. Um such that it does remain at the highest point below thirty inches. Um but as Jennifer had mentioned, we really felt that the patio option should be um you know, provided at where the wall height does not exceed twenty-four inches uh for a safety perspective. Um so we felt that, you know, it was very important to keep the consistent wall height throughout these two twenty units. So I don't know if that answers your question.
Yes and no, I guess. I understand why you want to maintain the wall height so that there's no railing, but um even in doing so, does the, does the layout, I guess, of the alleyway and the street provide for modulation of the first floor elevation? Or are they all going to be at the fourteen point, whatever we're doing down there, I forget?
I I believe there was on, I I believe all of the units were at the fifteen point fifteen. Correct.
And one other question on the on the site layout, the colored uh site plan here, it only indicates two twenty-two foot wide units. Is is that correct, that the whole time?
Correct, yes. Um we have, yeah, just these two are going to be the twenty-two foot wide. And then we do have two twenty by forty-six high vis sides, which do help um again, create a little bit larger unit. So those actually will become um twenty-one foot four wide on the front elevations.
Okay. So at this point, has Toll Brother, are they committed to the layouts um from the from the builder's perspective? And are you just waiting to sell then to modify the owner options to these plans or or is it still really a kit of parts? I guess is what I'm asking.
These are pretty much uh done, Jen. With all your options.
Yes, yeah. So all the options that we have um are available. And Sean, I think um you know, we've learned a lot from block J. So I think there are going to be some pieces again kind of put into place. Um you know, I know one of the big items was making sure we have some rear bump outs. So things like those will be pre-selected. Um and again, all the elevations. But then the features such as, you know, a mid kitchen versus rear kitchen, those things, those are ready to go, ready to be optional to the buyers. Um and then, yeah, like the pieces for, you know, the high vis ends will make sure that those lofts are the only thing that's up offered to them. So there's no issue there. Um so, yeah, we're hoping for a great kit of parts. Yeah.
Um what about the rooftop screening that has been going on at block J? Is that going to be the same solution over here?
Rob, unless you have any objections, I would say
No, it's like the ones you got in the rear. So if we have to put them on the roof, we're going to do it the same way.
Same way.
I don't know if you showed any on your plan. Um we can go back.
Yeah, I don't think we did for these. Um but you know, I think they actually turned out pretty nice and
So so the board understands, uh go back to that sheet. Um so at the top, um we matched the siding and there's like a little, you want to take your cruiser?
I can actually, if if it's easier, I can pull up from block J if you'd like to see it. Um but yeah, it'll be right up here.
I'm familiar. I just want you to show the board.
Yep, that's what I'm saying. We want to show, we want to show the board. Yep. And these uh are for folks that buy these rooftops. We were struggling with the location of the air conditioning units. And also trying to screen them when we put them on top of the roof, so you wouldn't see them. So we built like a nice structure. We took the same materials, uh the max deciding, the color to screen them. And uh they actually came out pretty good. You don't even realize that they're there.
So it's this little piece here. Um so it it's about three feet from the top of wall. Actually, I have a section that I can show you a little bit better. Um so it completely screens them. And then we also have this little parapet, which kind of helps again with um view lines from the ground. Um so you you really don't really, you know, you don't notice them um so much as you do on this two D image. But yeah, they look nice. And um like Rob said, they blend in well with the um elevations. Same materials. And here's kind of what they look like in a standard strip. This one, I guess, is a little bit different. This one has two of the standard um fourth floor units, which I think this might be the only strip in block J that has that. So.
You're finding select that um larger build loft options to have that extra space so that the scenario you're just showing us is probably going to be more common?
I think so, yeah. So more so like um sorry. It's looking a little bit more like this one um for most of the buildings. I think people are really liking having either an extra bedroom. Um you know, work from home space, um kids loft, whatever. I think uh Rob and Patrick can tell you, people are using it for everything these days. So and then they've done a really nice job with the landscape um to really kind of create a really nice, you know, outdoor kitchen, outdoor lounge area. And obviously, as you all know, you can't beat the views. So.
So the first residence to Ed John Hudson moved in, the first CVO was, has it been a year now?
Yeah, it's been a year. Um yeah, a year, yes.
Yeah. So any um learnings in terms of um the residents that are are there now in terms of um the layout and the livability of the the townhouses?
I think the space is fine with them. They 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 like the uh first floor studies, their offices, the bedrooms. Um they feel a value with the lofts on the top um with the extra bedroom space. And I think they feel like uh, you know, for resale value, um even buyers that don't even have kids living with them, older kids, they just, they've been doing it. So and even if they don't use it, they've been using it as a second office up there. Um I don't think there's anything else that they uh have changed. We we give them the option of flipping kitchens. As Jennifer said, you can do a middle, you can do a rear. Um you could get a bedroom on the first floor. You can do a study. We also have a master bathroom. It's a nice layout that it's it's an alternate bathroom. So it gives you a bigger master bathroom. And it makes the back bedroom just like one big bedroom. So if you don't have a lot of kids, uh you lose the two and you get one big one. See, I have that option. And then on the top, you can do like our park model, nothing, which nobody does, or you can do the open loft that has it open. And I would say about twenty percent of people do that, but eighty percent of the people are going or seventy percent are going with the full loft bedroom bath. And then they still get some outdoor space.
Yeah, so they're maximizing the living space.
Correct. And you know, then they're doing a lot of outdoor stuff, you know, grills and, you know, patios and outside for their um living uh outdoor, you know, space. And it's just enough for what they need. The patios, we we heard what the board said. Um we struggled with the first ones because of the Washington wall. So we really put a lot of time in to make these work to get uh the patio door option for outdoor space uh on the first floor as well.
I think the um the outdoor trellis has also been popular.
True, that's right.
So you probably want to represent that on these plans as well, what you're doing.
Trellises. That's a good point. So what Sean's talking about, we we sell as an option, there's a trellis. Um and we have it in our model home and there it is right there. And it's an option. It's not included. You you can purchase it if you want it. And they open and close. So if it gets too hot up there, you can close them and have like a nice shaded area. And then you can open them and get some ventilation. So we offer that as an option as well. And and folks have been doing it. We uh we had a uh a little struggle on how to attach them properly. We got through all that. So they're all, you know, structurally sound and attached to the building properly. And uh, you know, they've been inspected and uh they're all um pretty much metal and manufactured from a manufacturer painted. So there's no maintenance to them. It's just, you know, you don't have to do anything with them in the future for the H A or the homeowner.
And Rob, those tie into block E as well, correct? You're using almost the same.
So block E, yeah, so block E, we have them on the building as standard. And block J, there's there's sold as an option.
So it's kind of a nice piece that kind of trickles through um all the different blocks.
I've been with Toll Brothers a long time and I built a lot of town townhomes and i- it's pretty cool to be able to offer these townhomes and do so many different options to them. And just, you know, you buy a townhome, you don't even do so much, but be able to flip bedrooms and kitchens and add, you know, rooftop options because we have that ability down here, trellises, barbecues, first floor patios. It's yeah, it gives the buyer a lot of um options. And uh we did hear the board about the back, you know, not having, if you look to the rear, Jennifer. Because we were selling this guys as an option, these little rear bumps. And unfortunately, some people weren't buying them. So and I know the board was concerned and made comments that it just looked too plain. So we're going to be adding these to give the back some, you know, some pop. It's got some nice detail to them. And you could see that uh as Jennifer put these together at the different elevations, so you get um some different looks.
So it has the builder kit of parts been kind of locked and loaded now in terms of those twenty townhomes? Are those fully uh designed at this point?
I would say yes.
Yep, okay. And um so taking a step back from the uh architectural detail, it seems like we have a lot of engineering items that are still pending from November. Uh is anyone here able to kind of provide an update on on that?
Hi, I'm Adam Chairt. It's Peter Chafkin uh from uh Ed John Hudson here.
Peter.
Uh I I heard that uh I I heard that comment on um uh during the work meeting and I I've reached out to my team to understand what um i- is outstanding. I know uh our team has been working on submissions to the health department uh as it relates to water and some other things like that. So I I don't have an answer for you a- at this point on um e- exactly where that stands. We will certainly follow up on it. Um I I do just want to make sure, because I I did hear, I think it was Dave's comment about how we had been, you know, asking to expedite this. And I I just want to um remind you, whi- which we had said at the time, for for us, the the most important thing that we were, the reason why we had asked you to expedite this approval was more so to ensure that Toll Brothers would be able to get their, the approval for the condo plan from the attorney general's office and continue the sales effort. Less so than, you know, we needed to have these lots finished immediately so that they could start building them because there's still a a substantial construction backlog in block J. So we don't want you to think that uh our asking you to expedite the approval was for naught or that we weren't appreciative of it. We absolutely are because it's put Toll Brothers in a position where they're going to be after um, you know, your concurrence or approval as A R B on their updated kit of parts. It'll put them in the position to finalize their offering plan to the attorney general's office. And then they can continue uh selling without a break in that as their construction operation follows behind.
So can someone speak to the construction backlog? It seems like the CFOs are are very slow in coming. So what is causing the the backlog?
Well, we um we we're going up to, we just closed a home last week. We have another closing coming up uh in like fif- uh fifty-nine, fifty-eight. And then our next group will be building seven. Um so building seven to eleven and building fifty-five or fifty-four to fifty-three and twelve are all going up. So we got one, two, three, three buildings right now um that are in construction and we're going to be going for, you know, COs this spring, summer. And then we got some more buildings coming up that foundations are completed. I want to start framing. So this summer, um we're going to have, you know, I think we got two more buildings in with the building department. Uh wait, ready to go. And then we're going to be submitting the last two. If you have the map, um Jennifer, I could walk everybody around.
So are you suggesting that you're So are you suggesting that you're right on schedule and this, uh, and on plan that?
Well, we we're probably behind, uh, a little bit on schedule, but we're going to be picking that up, uh, this, uh, spring, summer. We had a tough winter. I mean, we haven't had a winter like this in a long time and we got some delays on that. So if we kind of walk around the the job. So this is your model building, um, that we've had units already closed on across the street. We have lot one that's closing and the rest of the units have closed, except for lot six. That's a quick delivery home that's on the market. And then seven to eleven, these are going to be all like late spring closings, looking for like end of June, July. Across the street, we have a closing sixty-three. It's going to be closing in, uh, May, June. Sixty-two just sold. That was a quick delivery. We got that closing in July. You turn to the left, this whole building is closed except fifty-nine. We have one closing. We're trying to get this month. If not, it's going to go in the beginning of May. And then we have, you go over to the left, this this group right here, looking for like August closings. Go to this big seven unit building. We have lumber coming in, looking to close foundations done, looking to close those in October. These, turn the corner to the right. Those are going to be end of the year. No, I'm sorry. Go up to the other road. Jen, past fifty-five, the other side.
Which which lots are you looking at? Twelve through sixteen?
Thirty-three.
I'm sorry.
We're going as we built them. So these are the next, these these right now are going in for like great beams and finishes and getting ready for foundations. Right, right on the road, Jen. Thirty-three, thirty-two. Yeah. So those are going to be like toward the end of the year. And then if you go up all the way to the road.
Are you suggesting you're picking up the pace? Um, and there will be more CFOs, um, this year than.
We're hiring more subcontractors. Yes, we're we're under the gun. We got all these sold. Homeowners want to get in. Um, so we're hiring, uh, extra trades. We just got some new plumbers, you know, HVAC guys, because the other HVAC guy is kind of going a little too slow. So we got another company in that's doing the plumbing and heating. Another fire suppression guy. We're looking to get another mason. The framer seems to be moving along pretty well. We're going to be, we're framing this building now, which is sixteen. So the next one's going to be seventeen.
I think the good news too is at the beginning, sixty-seven through seventy-two were Park and Carroll units. So those are the more brownstone feel. And then we jumped directly to one through six, which is the more contemporary style. So there was, of course, going to be some growing pains with both of these units. Um, but now that we've done these and, um, we've done, you know, every single unit type. So that also helps, um, expedite everything in the path as well as, you know, we introduced elevator units, um, and that's in fifty-two through fifty-six. So again, the next set of units with thirty-three through thirty-nine has a couple elevators. So everything will have already been worked out. Um, so we like to say it'll just go up, no problems, right?
Yeah, so we have, so we have.
For a company in the size of Toll Brothers, I would have assumed that, you know, this, this, all of these things have been done many times before, given the the scale of your business. So it sounds like you still have a bunch of growing pains on on the Ed John Hudson property and that's contributed to the delays of the first batch. And hopefully you'll be able to, um, make up some lost time.
Yes.
Because the floor plans are going to be so similar at, um, O N P. Again, you know, they should be able to frame up no problem once we get there as well.
We have, we have, I'm sorry, we have noticed already the changes that we had made on seven eleven, the framer going up, uh, with the building a lot quicker than the first ones. Especially, you know, it's the fourth one he's done, you know, the first one is first and then the second one, either, you know, into five, six of them. So they kind of know all the things that they need to do.
Okay. So were the the renderings that you showed us basically the finalized builder kit of parts? Is is that what we're, um, approving this evening? Is is this the final? Facade design and bump outs and everything, uh, with the exception of the buyer kit of parts?
Yes, that's correct. Uh, just the exception of what the buyers, uh, purchased.
Okay, so this is what we'll see on on.
Yeah, and I I could probably almost say that everybody's going to probably go with those rooftops. There's, they see a value into it. So this is probably what you're going to be looking at.
Okay. Any comments from the planning board?
Do appreciate the the effort made to to provide more variety and ensure that it stays by kind of separating out builder kit of parts and the the buyer kit of parts. I think it's always challenging when you have a single developer developing multiple townhouses to have it look like it's been done and grown like it would in, you know, a different development. But so it it still has a feel of consistency that on my end, I'd always prefer even something that looks a little more organic and less single author. But I can appreciate the challenge in that. And I do think you've, you know, it's better than where we started. So I appreciate that.
You're welcome. And we did take all those comments into consideration, um, from the past, from the first round of kit of parts.
All right, terrific. Um, glad you were able to incorporate our our comments and, um, chose your own variability versus having, uh, us be more prescriptive. So what's the procedure, uh, Clinton, for an ARB? Is there a vote or do we? How do we proceed?
We need a resolution or as we did earlier, you can vote now and look for a confirming resolution later. But you will need to, um, adopt this proposal that you received by email dated April nine as the architectural rendering. I believe. Is that your view, Sean and Dave?
Honestly, this is, I think, our first kind of standalone ARB approval, um, since I've joined the planning board, so.
It it's the first that I can remember. But I I believe, you know, it it had always been a part of the approval resolution. So it's just a matter of pulling it out from a prior resolution, making reference to this proposal and passing it.
And there are specific, um, standards, if you will, that were incorporated as part of the the prior site plan application. With specific, so we could specifically reference those.
Okay, so, uh, Dave, you'll you'll draft the the resolution for us?
Yes.
All right, so.
I'm assuming that, Mr. Dab, you do not need it tonight, do you, the resolution?
Um, if it's possible, I'm sorry, I was on mute. What's the?
We don't have a resolution available at this point. The board would have to vote and then would have to get them a resolution. Confirming resolution, subsequent meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I think my preference would actually to to pass the resolution when we have all the engineering, uh, open items resolved. So that's, you know, we keep those paired up.
Yeah, and Madam Chair, there was another issue. Just, Jennifer, can you go back to the, uh, the the site plan? The or the drawing that had the, uh, the color, there you go. There was a, the road D that's shown on there. I I know this came up, uh, a number of times that, uh, that configuration actually, I don't think that it's, uh, conforming to code the way that that right of way meets, uh, Palisades Boulevard. And you're showing utilities located in there. That may be, and this may be part of the engineer's comments, but that that should reflect, uh, code with respect to how that that right of way meets, uh, Palisades Boulevard. At least at this point, it may, with the understanding that it may change going forward at some point in the future.
Can anyone speak to that?
I I can't speak to that personally, Madam Chair, um, but I I know that my team ha- has been working on it. DTS has been working on it and I, last I I saw, um, there, they had figured out that if there was, I think there was something about the radius not being slightly too sharp and and there had been a redesign, which frankly, I thought had been already submitted. But I I know, uh, Ms. Martinez, Craig, from, uh, my team will be calling you in the morning to catch up and understand if there are any issues, uh, understand what the issues are. But a- a- as I understood it, the things that are outstanding from an engineering perspective are the kind of ordinary course post approval things that are relatively consistent with how the board has approved the project in the past. It was, you know, follow-ups to to studies and health department approvals and things like that. There was not, there there weren't kind of specific, uh, particularly troublesome issues, if I if I recall correctly.
Yeah, I I I would agree with that characterization, uh, Peter. Uh, it's just that th- these have been, um, pending since November. So I I think Ms. Martinez, um, really needs an update on progress against each of them. And also the turning radius of this road D.
A- absolutely. I'll make sure that that happens tomorrow.
Okay, thank you very much.
Um, it's Rob Dowd again. I just wanted to see if the board would be able to prove the architecture just for the fact that, uh, we would need it for AG approval. As you know, that's a process.
For what approval? I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, AG, it's abbreviation, Attorney General approval for our offering plan. This is one component that we need, um, to submit, um, you know, with with all our documents. But we wanted to get town approval. Um, and like I said, we really put a lot of time into this. We we feel like we, uh, honored every single comment, um, that we've heard in the past to really put thought into these buildings and, you know, it cost and money was not an issue. It's just we wanted to really make these look very well. I have the board be proud of them. That we've listened to what they said and the changes that we made and we just would ask if we can get that tonight. Then I could, we can move forward while Peter is working on his stuff. This is just the architectural component.
Yeah, Rob, Madam Chair, if you don't mind, I just want to make sure everyone understands because Rob, being such an expert at this, spoke at a very high level. A- as the board ma- may be aware, for Toll Brothers to be able to sell before Toll Brothers can sell a condominium unit, before they can even offer it for sale, they need a condominium offering plan to be submitted to and approved by the Attorney General's Office. A- as I understand it, Rob, your team has the offering memorandum and the documentation ready to go for submittal. But as I understand it, you can't submit that without the board's ARB approval.
That's correct.
Is that right?
That's correct, Peter. So there's a lot of, uh, paperwork that's involved in that document. And this is the one component that we need, um, to finalize it. Otherwise, Toll Brothers can't put these on the market. We can't sell them. But in the meantime, uh, Peter's team could work on the engineering part. Um, and if we have to update an amendment or anything, but but this is just the the architectural component. So what would happen was Jennifer would just, um, submit these in our plans, right, Jennifer? And we put them in the floor plans. So the offering plan matches to what we're telling people that they're going to buy. Um, you can't put something in in an offering plan that you're not going to sell that doesn't match what is approved. If that makes any sense.
Okay, and since this is the first time we've decoupled the site plan approval from the ARB approval, this, uh, ARB approval is lagging and causing, um, a delay in the submission to the AJ's office. Is that correct?
That that's right. And as I'm sure Mr. Smith, uh, well, bo- both Mr. Smiths would advise you, but I'm thinking of Clinton, uh, an approval of the architecture tonight does not relieve us in any way of our obligations to respond to the conditions of the existing site plan approval resolution. So certainly we're, we're still, before a building permit is op- is issued, we're still obligated to meet every single one of those conditions on the, uh, existing resolution, including the radius of the street and all of the engineering comments.
Correct. Thank you, Peter.
And all of the block J townhouses have been made available for sale, or I, uh, understood that.
Yeah, so, uh, I can walk you through real quick. Everything is for sale except, um, where the sales trailer is, and I'll show you that. Jennifer, can you point to that? So this block right here, um, we are not going to sell it right now. We have our sales gallery there. And now that we're going to open up the twenty lots, we're going to keep that there. So we can sell. Everything else is available for sale, except the two model homes. Which is seventy-two and seventy-one. And then when we we get approval on the twenty lots from the AG and we would open all those.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Um, that was helpful.
Yeah, we're very excited. I mean, the project is coming along very well. Um, and as the buildings go up, it's really starting to come together and the, uh, homeowners love it. And, uh, you know, the pricing is, uh, been moving and we we need supply. We've only, I think we've only got six on the market right now.
Okay, um, so Clinton, can you repeat what the language is for the, uh, resolution?
It would simply be that the board adopts the drawing submitted or the material submitted by April nine letter from Patrick McCarthy as the, uh, architectural drawings for these twenty townhomes subject to the David, don't be writing now, subject to the ordinary conditions that are in the edge, um, resolutions regarding the architectural approval. Which harkens back to David's point about, uh, the resolution will say other things, but the gist of it is that these submitted by April nine is accepted as the architectural details.
Okay, so moved. Kirsten seconds, uh, all in favor, Ed? Ed, are you there? Are you muted?
Hi.
Okay, Lindsay?
Hi.
Erin?
Hi.
Matthew?
Hi.
All right, so the, uh, architectural detail of April ninth. All right, so the architectural detail of April 9th has been approved. Mr. Smith will draft a resolution, so.
That's it.
That's it.
Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you very much.
Thank you very much from Toll Brothers, we really appreciate this tonight. Thank you so much.
Have a good evening.
Very good.
Thank you, good night.
Thank you very much, take care.
Jennifer can stop sharing.
Sorry, I am, hang on. You'd think a year after this pandemic, I'd get better at it, but. All right, well, thank you so much, you guys.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, did everyone have a chance to review the minutes of March 18th, 2021?
I saw it. Minor copy.
Okay. I didn't see the edits, but do you want to describe the minor edits?
A spelling and names of who approved things, it looked like under the, the minute approvals, it was previous meetings, need to be updated with the actual people who are present.
Okay. Anybody else had substantive changes?
Audrey, I was absent, so I'll be abstaining.
Okay.
So was I.
Right, right, it was a lightly attended meeting, but we still had a quorum. All right, so.
I moved to approve them with the edits I submitted.
Okay, that was Kirsten moving to approve the minutes and I second. All in favor?
Hi.
Matt, I, Ed?
Hi.
And we have two extensions, Lindsay and Aaron. So with that, I move to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Second.
Kirsten seconds. Favor, Lindsay? Aaron?
Hi.
Matt?
Hi.
Ed?
Hi.
All right, good night all.
Good night.
Thank you.
Nice, nice job, nice job, good night.
Thank you.